Just a few seconds.
All right.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, you are live and ready to take over the meeting.
All right, thank you, Mr. Dantrell. Well, good afternoon, everybody. It is 4:01 PM on July 8th, 2020. This is a virtual special meeting of the Edina City Council. The meeting will be broadcast live on Edina TV, Comcast Channels 813 or 16, Facebook.com/Edinamn, and the city's watch a meeting webpage at edinamn.gov/livemeetings. Roll call, please. The calling the meeting to order, roll call, please, Ms. Allison.
Councilmember Brindle.
Here.
Councilmember Fisher.
Here.
Councilmember Staunton.
Here.
Mayor Hovland.
Here, present.
And Councilmember Anderson is absent.
All right, thank you. And we have a form of meeting agenda in front of us for this special meeting. Is there anyone who wishes to modify the agenda? Otherwise, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda shown.
Don't move.
Second. Got a motion, second to approve the agenda as shown. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Fisher.
Hi.
Councilmember, I threw you off by starting with you there, sorry. Councilmember Brindle.
Hi.
Hi.
Mayor Hovland.
Hi. The form of meeting agenda is approved. The next portion of the agenda deals with reports and recommendations. We've got a potential emergency regulation 2020-02 in front of us. As you all know, with council's guidance, the majority of the council's guidance issued an emergency order that was effective at 12:01 AM on Monday, July 6th. That order was good for three days. It required a special council meeting with respect to whether or not we were going to extend that emergency order 2020-02, which required face coverings indoors in public situations and also within city facilities except recreational facilities, with some designated exceptions. Manager Neil, since that time, has looked at some of the work that other cities are doing with respect to emergency orders, looked at the one that we put in place with your permission on Monday, July 6th. And I'm going to turn it over now to Manager Neil to explain some of the further backgrounding on this and the work that he did in preparing what he calls Draft Number Four, which is a potential extension, I would say consent extension by the council, authorizing the mayor to go ahead and extend that local emergency order 2020-03. There's also a couple of variations there that we could also pass, we could also follow. Manager Neil.
Thank you, Your Honor. You have given a bit of the background for how we got to today. The working draft that should be in front of the council at this point is Draft Four. It was, I think I sent it out about 45 minutes ago. And I've attempted to include both the content and formatting suggestions that council members have made to me over the past couple of days into this reformatted order. The reformatted order is a bit more expansive, and that was at the request of the council in terms of where face coverings should be or shall be worn from this point forward. It does also address specific circumstances where face coverings are not required, where this order is, where it's situations that are exempted from this order as well, and goes into more detail about those situations. We have added enforcement and penalty provisions that were not included in the order that expires today. Those are in Section Five of this order, of the Draft Four order. The enforcement provisions are currently provisions that are included in City Code, which we're enumerating in this draft, just to be clear about them as well. From a strategy standpoint, our enforcement of this order will be both a matter of law enforcement and licensing. So depending on where we have the best leverage to achieve voluntary compliance, that's the source of the authority that we'll use to enforce. We've had some discussion about this. It will be, of course, a call that has to be prioritized among other law enforcement demands. And some of those other law enforcement demands will have a higher priority than a mask call, but we will respond to calls for enforcing this ordinance. I believe that I have incorporated or responded to the concerns that council members had over individual provisions, but I'm happy to answer any questions about this reformatted Draft Four.
Questions from Manager Neil from council members? Manager Neil, you sent out a couple of different emails that had bullet points attached to them that indicated some of the changes from the original emergency order. And I thought some of those were helpful. I think in the period since we had our last meeting and the original order went into effect on Monday morning at 12:01 AM, many of us have had communication from our residents that said, don't forget about this particular issue or that particular issue. I think Member Brindle in particular has had folks calling about multi-tenant office buildings, multifamily buildings, people that were feeling uncomfortable about the risks they might face in those common areas, whether it's a lobby or a hallway, laundry room, fitness center. And Member Brindle, I don't know, you may want to comment about some of the concerns that you heard expressed. And I think they're all embodied in what we've got here for revised Draft Four, but I'd like to hear from you on that.
They are, and I do like what I see in this Draft Number Four. So the first person I heard from is a person who spends part of the time, part of the year in New York. And their order includes common spaces in the multi-unit buildings, and there are many of those in New York. And so that was the first inkling I had that this would be something we should include since we have well over 1,000 apartments in our city and in multi-unit buildings. And it also includes multi-unit office buildings. And I think that's very appropriate. So thank you for doing that. We have heard from a few people in the emails we've received, but also some calls and just visiting with people who work in multi-unit buildings and letting them know and asking them about their common spaces. And they all said, well, I always wear a mask when I'm out there. And I said, well, and so should the public. So downtown Minneapolis, I think in some buildings, one person can stand in an elevator. And so that elevator takes one person at a time to their destination. Some of the larger elevators, they have spots on the floor for up to two people. Maybe a big elevator might have three people, but at most, it's two people in an elevator. So the buildings themselves are taking measures. And if people were to wear masks in those spaces, they possibly could get more than just one or two people on an elevator. And make it more efficient for people. So thank you for including it. I think it's an important part of this draft.
Mr. Mayor. Manager Neil.
Yeah, I would point that out, that that provision was not included in the current order, but was something that we did hear, as Councilmember Brindle noted from a number of folks and asked us to address it. And I would note also that the owners of those facilities are, of course, fully empowered to make their own regulations as well about how they want to handle masking in their buildings. And some of them have produced regulations that are tight or even tighter than the ones that we're looking at here.
I've also had contact from couples in owned multifamily buildings that have the same sort of sentiment that the folks are that are renting with respect to those common spaces and were also encouraging of the fact that we ought to think about whether it's rental or owner-occupied property, that we have a consistent sort of approach on the issue.
Right. And so the common spaces part of this draft does not identify it as rental or owned. So it's just all multifamily, multi-unit, multi-tenant, multifamily, multi-tenant.
Agreed. Neil, did you have a?
I wanted to also point out that one of the other new provisions in this, two new provisions that are part of this, on the exemption side, are public schools, public and private schools. We had some feedback from residents and I think even school board members that there was some interest in preserving their own authority to set masking policies within the schools. And the same is true for places of worship. That wasn't mentioned in previous orders, but is included as an exemption in this order. I did communicate the status of this discussion to school superintendent from the Edina Schools, John Schultz, to make him aware that we were probably going in this direction. He appreciated that. They have their own set of regulations that they are intending to follow from Minnesota Department of Education and Minnesota Department of Health. So students will be protected. They just aren't included in this order.
Good, thank you. Member Fisher.
I just wanted to say that, you know, last go around, I was thinking, you know, we let what I considered private buildings, whether that be office or residential, deal with their own masking. And the overwhelming number of emails and calls from people that are literally frightened to leave their apartment or their condo unit made me really realize the situation that exists there. And it really reframed for me, not so much about ownership of the structure as much as really framing it around what other choices do people have. So if you want to get outside and you have to get in an elevator, you know, to leave your apartment, you have to walk down a narrow corridor and get in an elevator, you don't have much choice. And to stand in that small box with someone that doesn't believe in wearing a mask puts you in a very precarious situation. And it really didn't occur to me so much until we got in this latest round of communication from people. And I think it does apply in apartments and condos and offices. You know, if employers are requiring people to come back to work, again, they don't have much choice. They have to.
Uh-oh.
Yeah, all right. Yeah, it looks like we have a little bandwidth problem over in the Cornelia neighborhood. We'll wait for Member Fisher to come back on. Member Staunton, you've had a chance to review this. You know, you also spend part of your time doing city attorney work for the city of Excelsior. And while Excelsior may not be taking this up, I'm really interested in your observations about the revisions we made to the original order and what you find to be satisfying or dissatisfying about this particular proposal. Maybe that's not a very good way to couch it, but are there things you like or things that you have concerns about? Maybe that's a better way to put it, with respect to this proposed extension of the emergency order.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm supportive of the revised order as drafted. I think it accomplishes what we're seeking to accomplish. To me, there's really three things to think about here. One is, you know, this is still a dangerous situation, or at least potentially dangerous. We don't know as much as we need to know about this virus and how it's being spread and where it's being spread. One of the things that I found very valuable was information that is now on the city's website. There's a dashboard about summaries of cases in Edina. Mr. Mayor, I think you spoke about this earlier this week. And it has some interesting information in terms of a recent spike in the seven-day rolling average of number of cases. And what is also interesting is it reveals that the age spread of the cases is pretty dramatic. We have almost a quarter of the cases are people 19 years of age and younger. About 40% are 30 years of old, 30 years of age and younger. So the other thing is that 65% of the cases are people who are in private residences as opposed to only 19% in long-term care or assisted living facilities. So the notion that this is just a nursing home disease or an old person disease is, I think, those numbers show that that's not true. And we need to be careful with this, and we need to do everything we can to try and prevent the spread of it and control the spread of it. The order, I think, does the right thing in terms of scope. That was really the discussion, it seems to me, between the last order and this order. You know, I'm with Councilmember Fisher in terms of the notion that I'm trying to find the places where people don't have much of a choice to be indoors. And certainly grocery stores, pharmacies, hardware stores. Generally, those retail establishments that were always open, even through the stay-at-home orders. The other places like hair salons, fitness centers, et cetera, have industry guidance from the governor and I think are addressed under that. I think the places people are asking us to encourage everybody to be protected is in those places that they don't have much choice about where to go. And so I'm on board with the scope change that includes the common areas in multifamily buildings or in office buildings as well. And then finally, I would just reiterate what I said in our previous meeting, which is bullet here. It's not, you know, if I found the Rube Goldberg contraption that could make everybody happy and restrict no one's lives, I'd be happy to do it. But I think here you have to balance, what is the potential risk? And what is the magnitude of the restriction that we're imposing? And we do this in government all the time from a public safety perspective. We're trying to figure out what kinds of harm are we avoiding? And here, I think it's unknown, but I think it is reasonable to be concerned from what we're hearing from the medical industry, from the healthcare and the public health industry, that we should be very careful about this. On the other end of the spectrum, the restriction we're imposing is a very minor one. I know we've gotten a lot of emails and messages from folks around the community, some of whom think that we shouldn't be restricting their use, the way they enter a restaurant or a grocery store or hardware store or pharmacy. But we do that in lots of situations. And I think this is a very minor restriction, given the potential that we have for risk. So those three bases, I'm on board with the order. I think it's been crafted well. And I'm supportive, Mr. Mayor.
Good, thank you, Member Staunton. I join you in being concerned about the data that came off the dashboard that I used to talk about the spread of cases amongst our youngest residents, particularly since, I think, the end of June. And I was struck with the data to the extent that I a little bit more. 13 cases a day, and they're in that 20 to 29-year-old age group. And I just think that as these cases steadily climb amongst the younger members of our community, particularly these teenagers and 20-year-olds, many of whom are asymptomatic, it's really incumbent upon us, even more than we thought last week, to be thinking about those that are most vulnerable in our community. And I think we're doing the right thing by requiring these masks. I was struck by, there was a former AP teacher at Edina High School, and she had a beautiful way of putting all of this in simplistic terms, a woman named Betsy Cussler. I think many of you know her. And in her household, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but she said, "In a society, we all agree to do certain things to keep each other safe, like stopping at stop signs, not throwing garbage in the creek, not leaving dangerous implements out where children and pets may be harmed. Masks are a way of taking care of each other. Let's be clear about why we're doing this. We're just trying to take care of each other." And I thought that kind of hit at the heart of the matter for me, that I don't think any of us really wanted to to impinge on personal liberties any more than we had to. But in this situation, I think those greater societal needs compel us, at least me personally, to think about the requirement of face coverings in our community. And I'm supportive of this as well. Has Member Fisher been able to get back on yet? Has anybody been helping him from a technical standpoint?
Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
So I'm on my phone now. I don't know what happened. Did you lose me when I was in the middle of talking earlier?
Yes.
Okay, well, just know that the stuff that I said after I was cut off was much better than the stuff before.
All right, the key now is, can you remember that? We'd like to have you repeat it. And you've had a chance to practice it once.
No, it's all right. I mean, I was just talking about my coming around to realizing that the multifamily housing and multi-tenant office actually is a pretty critical need in an area where people don't have much choice, that they have to move through those spaces. That was my primary point then. And now, it took me a while to get connected, so I've just been listening to a little bit to Councilmember Staunton and now to the mayor.
Mr. Mayor, if I could jump in on one other point.
Yes, please.
One of the things that I think has been a good addition to this draft as well is is Paragraph Two that talks about when the draft, when the order will be lifted. And there's four different circumstances there about when it will be lifted. The first of which is if Governor Walz enacts a statewide order covering, requiring face coverings. The second is if the governor ends the statewide peacetime emergency. The third is if we, as the city council, pass a resolution rescinding the order. And then the fourth is if none of those things happen, it would be on December 31st of this year. So I think it's good to have a series of, you know, we did get some thoughtful emails about if you're going to do this, don't let it be a permanent thing. Let's only do it as long as we have to. And I think that those are good steps in that direction.
Good. Yeah, thanks for that comment. That's an important comment, I think, because we did have several emails, people suggesting that we put an end date on it. And I think the way we've got this crafted in that particular section too, it does provide those termination points.
And given the number of, you know, if you've been following this in the news, there's a lot of cities that have been considering this. And it would not surprise me if the governor went ahead and expanded this more broadly before next week. So this may be a short-lived order from that perspective.
Question.
Yes, Commissioner, Member Brindle.
So I'd like to understand the guidance on the December 31st date. The earlier draft had an August 31st date. So what's, why December 31st?
From my point of view, August 31st is just a month and a half away, basically. And I thought that we should push the date out a little bit further so we don't have to address this issue so quickly in time, because we might want to extend it again. So I thought, why not push it to the end of the year, which was somewhat of an arbitrary recommendation? But if something happens in the interim where, you know, there's an end to the state's peacetime emergency declaration or our council, based on information we received, decides to rescind the order, we can do that in the gap period without having to take this matter up for extension again, you know, within about five weeks.
Okay.
Manager Neil.
I was also going to say, the other reason is that effectively, that's kind of the end of this group of city council members as a council, right? Your authority kind of ends on, not precisely on 12/31, but pretty close. So it just takes you to the end of your authority as a group.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask you a question quick?
Yes, Member Fisher.
Somewhat related to this, and I think it might be helpful for anyone that's watching or listening. Why is it that your first order was a three-day limit? And what's different about this? Why could we set, you know, whatever date when the last time around it was a three-day limit?
I'll turn to Attorney Knutson for an answer to that question. He anticipated, he was in good anticipation on that. Attorney Knutson.
Mayor, members of the council, by your ordinance, by law, the ordinance, the regulation can only last for three days unless the city council consents to extending it.
So, okay. Well, I'm just, so could we have done it for longer the first time? Or was it automatically, did it have to start with three days and then you can extend it to whatever length? I'm just curious.
You could have done it, as you say, automatically last time. But if you recall, the declaration or the proclamation hadn't even been written at that point.
Oh, okay, that makes sense. So getting it out there and then meeting to decide, you know, what we want to do with it and to refine it, which makes sense. I mean, we've had, it's obviously helpful to look at a document rather than just talking about one in theory.
I think we got the general consent of the council to implement the face covering requirement. And then it was crafted, and then we certainly wanted everybody to look at it, to see if it should be refined. And if so, how? So that's the purpose of Draft Four.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay. All right. Other questions from council members or comments that you'd want to make? Otherwise, we could entertain a motion to, I think it would be a motion to consent to extend amended emergency regulation 2020-02. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. Is there a motion to extend amended emergency regulation number 2020-02 as embodied in Draft Four of the local emergency order 2020? It says 03 at the top there. Manager Neil. And it says amending 2020-02 down below. You mean 2020-02, don't you?
I think that's right, isn't it?
But this is a simple order.
It's a new order?
It's an amended order.
But we're amending 2020-02, not creating a new order 2020-03, or can you, you want to explain that?
Either way works. I don't think it's important.
Mr. Mayor, I think it would make sense to caption it as 2020-03, just to distinguish it from 2020-02. And it'll make it easier for reference perspective.
I would agree, because it is materially different, both in its content and its structure. So that's why we did put a new title, a new numeric title on it.
Mr. Mayor, I would approve, I would move that we consent to the adoption of local emergency order 2020-03, amending local emergency order 2020-02 regarding required face coverings.
Thank you, Member Staunton. Is there a second?
Second.
A second, yes.
Yep, second by Member Brindle. And we could note a co-secending by Member Fisher. Any further discussion?
I guess I would like to jump in here in discussion. We've received up to, upwards to about 400 emails on this. And there are few things that generate this much, this much attention from the community. Of those 400, we've got about 63, 64 emails. And please don't mandate a mask order, please make it voluntary, in some words, stronger than that. But mostly, people who would not like to see a mask order are looking at it from the perspective of, you know, I already wear a mask and I do it on my own, and, or I don't, and I make that choice on my own. So, and then from the perspective of the majority of emails, it's support for this, there are, there are a number of physicians, they are on both sides. Some physicians say, let the, let the virus take its course, don't get in the way of this. Some physicians cite studies that question the effectiveness of masks. And some physicians are adamantly in support of, of the, of the order to have everyone, everyone wear masks when they are out in public. So I just did want to, want to recognize that, that we've received, very few of the emails, I would say maybe half the emails, have one line in them. The others are paragraphs of what they are, what they've learned, what they want to share with us, and what they want us to take into consideration. And this is an important decision. It will affect how really everyone does what they do when they're out in public. And I respect that, I respect that, that everyone has the, has the ability to make their own choices. And if a person cannot wear a mask, they just need to say so. And that is in this order. They just simply need to say so. And, and so, so I think it's an order that, that provides good guidance for employers. It provides good guidance for the public as they go into a store, as they go into a building, into a business. So, so I, I think, short of letting the, you know, the, the argument of letting the virus take its course, that is, that's certainly a valid argument, and it's one, I guess I'd like to learn more about, because I really don't want to get it. But nonetheless, I do want to recognize all of the thought and the time people have taken to communicate with us on this.
Thank you. Member Fisher.
I'm sorry, you could let Member Staunton go first.
No, he's, he's sitting there thinking.
Okay. All right, well, I will, I just, I would just say that I can't stress enough that this is about protecting our neighbors. And it's additive to other precautions, not in replacement of other precautions. And I think all of these emails that Member Brindle alluded to, you know, with a lot of commentary about that. And for me, at the end of the day, the freedom of choice argument isn't working, because your freedom of choice is affecting someone else's health. And we talk a lot about, a lot of the, the information out there is about the death rate. But I'm more and more reading about the life-altering changes that happen for some people that are getting COVID-19. And I think we have to look out for everybody here. One of the other things that, things that have struck me is the rate of change. I think it's being measured in a minute, in terms of knowledge, in terms of information gained. And so it strikes me when people reference something from even three weeks ago, what a doctor might have said, or what an expert might have said, that same expert has changed their mind already. And most of them are moving toward this notion of, we don't know everything, but having a mask seems better than not having a mask. Member Brindle alluded to the number of emails we've gotten. Yes, it's surely been more than 400, it's in that range, four to 500. But I just want to give people a little glimpse as to the passion that, that folks have around this issue. So the morning after our meeting, so the morning of June 30th, I read two emails back-to-back. And I'm just going to paraphrase from each email. The first one, written at 9:49 a.m., says, "All I can say to all of you is wow. Total abuse and overreach of government power. Shame on all of you." So two minutes later, another person wrote, and I read these back-to-backs. "I was absolutely appalled by yesterday's decision. You did not take it far enough. Shame on you, I thought you knew better." So it tells you that we're a little bit in the middle. And, and I feel like the best thing we can do is do the, make the best decision we're capable of, looking out for the whole, trying to respect people's freedom of choice, but at the same time, finding a way to keep our community safe and to keep these businesses open. Many of the emails from the anti-masking folks are saying that we're going to cause businesses, our local businesses, more pain and lost business. And I couldn't disagree more. I think we're getting many emails from those local businesses. They're part of the group asking for help, because they don't want to offend their customers, but they know they have to keep their employees safe to stay open. Sick employees result in shutting down businesses. Hospitals filling up are also going to result in shutting down our businesses. And I think we're seeing that across the country. And frankly, I think that's part of that constant change I was referring to. So our, the proportion of pro to against, before our June 29 council meeting, was about two to one. Two, for every one that was against, two people wore four masks. Based on just what's happened in the last couple of weeks, this last batch of 250, 300 emails, it's eight to one for masking. And I think that's really based on what's happening around our country right now. When you look at the states that have not done the basic things, they are now requiring masking, they're shutting everything down, that's what we don't want to do. We don't want to shut down our economy. So that's why I think this is the best route and the way to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Fisher. Member Staunton, any comment?
Well, all I would add is that I hope that folks, what they take away from this is, as Member Fisher said, we're trying, and as you said, Mr. Mayor, we're trying to help each other here. And so as this is implemented, I'd encourage folks to exercise some grace. If someone is not wearing a mask, let's not climb all over that person, you know, let's encourage, let's, let's ask, let's, let's, you know, as neighbor to neighbor, let's, let's educate and encourage people to get on board as opposed to making this a fight over this thing. I really think it's, it's incumbent on all of us to work together to find our way out of this. It's a very challenging situation and one that we don't know a lot about, but we have to work together if we're going to survive it. So that'd be my advice.
Thank you. I would just reiterate, I think for all of us, it's been a difficult process, difficult decision-making, but I think at the end of the day, a wise decision on the part of our council. With respect to what the governor might do, I was on a call on Tuesday with mayors from across the state, and Commissioner Deed was interested in knowing, based on the question he received from the governor, what we think about a statewide face covering policy. And what he's trying to figure out, I think, is whether there's an economic benefit in having a statewide policy. Because it is certainly true that people feel differently about this in Ely than they might in Edina, or they might in Fergus Falls compared to St. Louis Park. And it's, it's a difficult thing to analyze, but I think that they're asking the right question. And it was, I think one of our planning commissioners sent us a reference to a Goldman Sachs study that said, in Goldman Sachs's opinion, if we had masking countrywide or globally, it would be a $1 trillion benefit to the economy. So I think that's what the governor is trying to think through, whether or not there's an economic benefit in having a statewide masking policy. Well, I think we'll see something on that fairly soon, and I can't predict what they'll determine. Because the mayors were also uncertain about what should be done across the state. Some had a regional approach, some a local approach, some thought it would be important to do it statewide. So difficult decisions all the way around. With respect to exemptions, Member Brindle mentioned categories of exemption. When folks see this order, there are 13 categories of exemption, and I think we covered everything. And in looking at our educational system, both public and private, thinking about them taking care of the issues they need to deal with, but being mindful that we're only eight weeks from school, I would really encourage parents to try to get your young adults in the groove of practicing all of these habits that we keep talking about. Distancing, 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 as Mike Osterholm would say, wearing a mask, keeping your hands clean, being really careful about your associations with others. So I support this as well. I think it's a good piece of craftsmanship by our city manager here with all the editing that our council members did to make this a much better document than the first one that we had in place. And I'm supportive of it as well. If anybody else has comments, please so state, otherwise we'll, we'll call roll. Are members ready to do roll call on the vote? Looks like it. All right. Clerk Allison?
Member Brindle?
Hi.
Member Fisher?
Hi.
Member Staunton?
Hi.
Mayor Hovland?
Hi. The motion as stated by Member Staunton is approved. An order will be issued accordingly that comports to Draft Four.
Thank you so much. I think, Manager Neil, is there anything else to be covered under this agenda?
For the council, staff will get moving on a number of fronts here very quickly as soon as this meeting is concluded, and to get this ready for implementation tomorrow.
All right. Is there a motion for adjournment? Member Brindle?
Just a quick comment that the moves of this council has required staff to react very quickly. And I just want to say a word of appreciation, because there's a lot going on. There are things that, you know, our city is, is doing in all its departments. And when we take action that causes priorities to have to shift in order to, to do the work we've asked for, I just want to make sure that the staff members realize that we understand that and appreciate it, and, and thank them very much.
Thank you, Member Brindle, for bringing that up. It has been a tremendous amount of work on the shoulders of our staff, just with the regular work that was going on with COVID-19 and trying to run the city, and dealing with civil unrest, and then we rolled right into this masking issue. So the burden has been very significant. And I would say for all of you council members as well, my appreciation to all of you, this is a full-time responsibility, along with full-time work, I think, for all of us here lately. And, and your attention to all of this, and your, your individual and collective wisdom is greatly appreciated.
Well, just one last comment, and that is that we would not be doing this if we had not gotten or started getting a lot of emails about residents saying, "We need help, we need help requiring people to wear masks. We're not going to, we're not going to feel safe going out unless people are required to wear masks." And so it took a while for that number of emails to reach a critical mass. And, and when it did, we decided we better, better think about it and consider it. So here we are.
All right, good. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No more.
Second.
Second, we got a motion second by a Member Brindle. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Member Brindle?
Hi.
Member Fisher?
Hi.
Member Staunton?
Hi.
Mayor Hovland?
Hi. The virtual special meeting of the Edina City Council held this eighth day of July, 2020 is adjourned.